Father, I come at this hour with a humble heart, just thanking you for being so good to each and every one on the sound of my voice. Lord, you have blessed us both individually and collectively, and that's enough to say thank you, sir. Father, as should you crown every elected official here with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the business at hand. Bless us, keep us, and protect us. Please in all blessing, we thank in your darling and son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us pause for a moment of silence, please, for Ms. Ruby Wilder Wallace, mother of Kay King, Moore House Economic Development, Mary Ann Ricks, sister of Lisa Chafford, city marshal, Mary Bradshaw Wilson, wife of Judge Woodrow Wilson, and Shirley Adcock Walker, mother of Councilman William Nathan. Let us bow our heads, please. Thank you.
Pledge. Pledge and lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual will be liberated.
Good evening. I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman. Ms. Goman, roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
I'll present, ma'am.
Thank you. I have just a few announcements that I would like to make and share a little information with you. I'm sure everyone has been enjoying this cool weather as we get ready to enter the fall season. It has been nice. On August the 23rd, we had a meeting at the municipal center that was sponsored by the White House Rural Council. We had area elected officials there, the USDA director, DRA, with the federal, on the federal level, and EDA representatives. We had an opportunity to discuss our needs. Ms. King was in attendance within, at that meeting, and Mr. Armstrong, I believe you were there. And I thought it was a good opportunity to share what's generic to rural communities. Also, on September 1st, the Northeast Louisiana Economic Alliance hosted a meeting for Louisiana Economic Development. Secretary Stephen Moray had an opportunity to discuss needs that were even more generic to Bastrop, and he made note of some of those concerns. One in particular was the red light on Marlette and East Madison. And we're, how are we coming with that study? They're supposed to come back. I asked them to wait until school was in session. I don't think they have put up anything at this point. Do you know, Mr. McKee, if DOT, have they put in anything to start that study? Okay. So that's pending, and Secretary Moray made a note that that is a concern for us. And also, the dangerous intersection at Collingston and NAF. He made note of that, and we're looking into some things that we need to do to address that intersection, especially with having a new development out there, DG Foods. We want people to be as safe as possible. We're looking at the traffic picking up on both ends, so that would take care of the, that end that crosses over Collingston Road, if we could get that intersection improved. And also, getting a red light on Marlette and East Madison would take care of the opposite end. I think that's a good lead into the industrial, the new industrial site that we're still evaluating, what would be the best location for that. I mentioned that to Secretary Moray. Currently, we're doing some soil testing to determine feasibility on that, but that is still very much on the horizon, and we are working closer to making a final decision, but I certainly want to make a wise decision in respect to federal money. We have applied for the ALGAP grant for $50,000 to improve our playground equipment. Received some letters of support from our other local elected officials. And I'm sharing that information with you. We also received another grant, LCDBG grant, in the amount of $238,150. These funds will be used to rehabilitate the collection system in the high school neighborhood by replacing portions of the existing gravity sewer line in an effort to eliminate excessive inflow and infiltration. Mr. McKee, you want to add anything to that? That, we have not done the paperwork on that, but we did receive an award letter. I believe that concludes my announcements. At this particular point in time, are there any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number five. I'll entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, August 11, and regular meeting, August 24, special meeting.
I make a motion, ma'am.
Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore and second by Mr. Johnson. Item number seven, Ms. Kay King, Moore House Economic Development. Did I skip number six? Finance, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for being so vigilant, Mr. Armstrong. Item number six, I'll entertain a motion on our finance committee report, Resolution 111397, bills and claims for the month of August 2011.
Ma'am, I move that we accept the finance committee report, Resolution 111397, bills and claims for the month of August 2011.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Goman, did I do that on the minutes?
Uh, no, ma'am.
I don't remember saying it now that. Okay.
I think, were you asking?
Let's go back and make sure we take, take care of what we were supposed to do. We did the motion, the second. Are there any questions on item? This is back on the minutes.
No.
Discussion?
No.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two new officers with us. Chief Black, if you would. We want to certainly welcome our two new officers into our fold.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce them to the board of Alderman. This is Joey Mirrorhead. He comes from another police agency, brings with him some experience, and he's on the street doing an excellent job. He's off to a great start. Hope he has a long future here at Bastrop Police Department. And Les Hager here, he's our newest hire. He is currently in the North Delta Regional Training Academy, and I'm anxious for him to get out and bring home some trophies and hit the streets as well.
Thank you, Chief Black. Officers, would you like to say something?
I'm good. I just thank y'all for all the benefit.
Thank you for coming to Bastrop. Okay. Item number seven, Ms. Kay King, economic, Moore House Economic Development.
Thank you, ma'am. I live in city council. I'm gonna be pretty brief tonight. I do appreciate all the prayers and condolences that I've received from the community and officials on the loss of my mother last week. We've been trying to get back into the routine of what we do, and in our organization, we are in the process of forming our goals and objectives for next year. And we do this every year. We review what we've had because things change during the year. And I'd like to invite the public as well as any city officials to come and discuss any ideas that they might have while we're, during this time, because we'll be formulating our budget for what we're gonna be spending money on. As part of that, I'd like to follow up a little bit on, as you talked about, the intersection. Our organization has worked a couple of years on trying to do something with the intersection at Collingston and Airport Road, even before the DG Foods came in, because we saw that as a detriment to the industrial park. And we did work very hard and got some, a lot of data from the sheriff's office and turned it into DOTD, and we felt like that we had done a lot, and we think that, that that project is moving forward, and our organization is gonna continue to be on standby in a supportive role. That is one of these things that I talk about, that doesn't always, it's projects that may not be in the city, and so the parish and city and other agencies have to work together to try to make things happen. So we'll continue to work in a supportive role on that, and then we're looking at the goals, other goals that we, we're interested in and what we can do in other areas. One thing that our organization has kind of shifted to, we're always gonna work on developing infrastructure. We're always gonna work in a, in a, in response to inquiries that we get about businesses and do those things, keep our website up. But more and more, we've understood that we need to do some things to help the tax base in this community, that that's a real challenge. So we've been shifting over and working with people that are in a little bit more toward ecotourism and building some alliances with people in the community, the tourism commission. We've been working with Joe Roth at the Star Home Place. One of our projects is canoe trails and canoe access into Maye Bartholomew, and we are making some progress with that. The Department Transportation and Development, we're working with them to try to get some access points, working with the police jury to try to get those access points. And I know that Mr. Roth's been in the paper. We have a number of people that are interested in this project. We have been working on it for some time, just kind of quietly, but it is something that, the canoe trails and the canoeing industry is a multi-billion dollar industry in this community, and we need to recognize as a community that this is a valuable asset that we need to have more access to and provide opportunities for the public to not only bring in tourism, provide recreation to our citizens. But the primary goal of our organization, of course, is to try to bring people in that spend money, that generate those sales tax dollars, because that's really ultimately what's gonna help the community from a financial standpoint, bringing in those new dollars into the community. And the other kind of more marketing-type project that we're gonna be working on as we go in, start this new year, we've hired Cindy Ingram, who I'm sure some of you may have met. She does, she's done a lot of work up in the Bastrop area, and we've hired her farm to help us put together, and I've tried to explain this, we're not gonna be advertising for healthcare companies, we're not gonna be advertising for the hospital, we're not gonna be doing things specifically. But what we hope to do is put together a composite of a lot of things into one brochure that we're going to put into relocation packets for the people coming in at CenturyLink. We're gonna put these in papers that are distributed in north, more toward North Monroe to let people see that Bastrop was more, it is more than a former paper mill town, that we have five nursing homes, we have assisted living, we have elderly housing, we have the new high school project, we have the council on aging, and that this is a community that people can maybe be able to keep their driver's license a little longer, maybe the traffic's not as demanding as, as maybe Monroe, and that this is a good place to live, and by distributing this too, we hope to generate a little bit of interest with people who might just pick this up and say, huh, I didn't know that Bastrop had all of this. Maybe I might take a drive and come up and do some shopping at the Walmart. And that's what we're hoping to get out of this. And so I know Ms. Ingram's working on this, and I'm anxious to see what she comes up with. And getting back to those short-term and long-term goals, we will be having our annual meeting. We're finalizing some of the plans on that. It will be the last Wednesday in October, on the 26th. We have this breakfast meeting every year. I affectionately refer to it as our sunrise service, because we get up real early and we talk about economic development. So we really get the serious people out that time of morning. But we will be presenting our goals, and we hope to have some, an entertaining, not entertaining, but an informative speaker that will talk about something that I, that I feel is really important to rural development. So I'm gonna leave a little mystery there, so we can generate a little interest that maybe we can have a good attendance on that day. And I will be sending out invitations, but I hope that you'll all mark your calendars and set your alarm clocks for that early morning meeting. And that's, that's the sum of my program for tonight. Do I have any questions on anything that might be, that you might be concerned about? No? Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work that you do. I know that it's a tedious process, and as I've said before so often, we have to follow a lot of leads before we, we get a good trail on something. But we are, we are a work in progress. Item number eight, reappoint Brenda Moore to the Historic District Commission. Ms. Moore is here.
Yes.
She'd like to have a few words, Ms. Moore?
Well, actually, I would. I'd like to thank you for the time and the experience that I've learned from being on the board, and I appreciate the opportunity to be invited to continue.
Thank you so much for your commitment to the public. At this time, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Ms. Brenda Moore to the Historic District Commission. Properly moved by Mr. Nathan and second by Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a unanimous vote in favor?
Okay, we'll take a vote. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goman, Mr. Lawrence. It's been a long day. Item number nine, Resolution 111402, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Applied Concepts Incorporated, ACI to lease seven Falcon dual dash mounted radars for the police department. Chief?
Our current equipment is old, and most of us, some of us gone out and needs replacing. And this allows us to purchase these radar units. I think it's like a lease to purchase or no interest over the term of the contract, and that way we can go ahead and get them in the cars now and pay for them during the year, as month to month.
Okay. Any other questions in reference to the chief's presentation?
Chief, is that an efficient number?
That's for, yes, that's for the marked cars.
Just a.
They're not all on the road at the same time, but if one goes down, one car goes down, and somebody gets in another, and you have to get in another car, that will cover all the marked police cars.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, if there are no further questions you have for clarity, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 111402.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second, was it?
Mr. Armstrong.
Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. While we are on the subject of the police, our equipment, we had a visit from the USDA today, and they are making some requirements on us in order to, to get the money for the police cars. So we have to just be cautious that we have to have money to run the city. We have to have a match. But in addition to getting the money from the USDA, we're having to make some improvements to the building for the ADA, the American Disability Act. I have also asked the USDA if they would assist us with making those improvements to make sure that certain areas are handicap accessible. I mean, we were handicap accessible according to the standards that were required in getting this building built in the 70s, but there are more requirements being placed on us. And also, I mentioned to the representatives from USDA that we need to make some improvements to this building. It was built in the mid 70s, and we have some structural improvements we need to make. The lighting is becoming obsolete, so we will be applying for assistance in that direction in the future. In fact, as soon as we can get that application, which is about this thick, completed. Item number 10, Resolution 111403, a resolution authorizing the mayor, acting in the name and stead of the city of Bastrop, to engage the services of Alderman and Associates to perform subsurface investigation, boring services, and other necessary work related thereto in assessing the suitability of industrial sites for the future development and to provide for other matters related thereto. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am. This relates to, I think, something you were talking about earlier, about investigating the industrial sites that are currently under consideration and having to do soil testing. And this follows a contract review that I did for Alderman and Associates, which has been identified as a company that does subsurface soil testing at these sites to determine whether or not they are suitable for buildings and whatever else you might need for a plant site. And so with the adoption of this resolution, you would be authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with this company for that purpose. And maybe, ma'am, did you also, you mentioned something about, this may be unrelated, about a grant? I think you said something else in your opening comment.
Okay, I talked about Secretary Moray with making improvements to that, out in that area. Was it that?
Right. And I think it was during, at that point. In other words, this is all related to that endeavor, and of course, you can't, or you shouldn't start doing anything on a site unless you figure out first whether it's suitable.
That's, that's correct.
So that, that's where we are on this.
The EDA grant at $1.8 million, before we spend federal money, we're going to be as reasonably certain as we can in site selection.
How will we pay for that now? Is that a part of that grant? It's coming from a part of that grant?
Right. That's kind of why I was making reference to that. I think that, that's what the intent is, to cover the cost with that grant.
Is this in the industrial park we previously had in Lampert? That this is a new site?
This is some property that's adjacent to the old industrial site. We are evaluating that area to determine feasibility. Some land, I think it's about 85 acres, adjacent to the current industrial site.
It's just only site?
Ms. King had made a recommendation of some property. I don't, have you done any in-depth study, Ms. King? That's the one that the city is looking into, that we're testing the soil.
I had identified a couple of sites that I felt would be suitable.
Please come back to the microphone since we're on this.
I had identified a couple of sites that I felt were suitable, but I've not heard anything back from Mr. Nasaka on what sites or if he was able to contact property owners on those. And one was on NAF Street. It was 100, around 105 acres on NAF. And then I had also looked at some property in behind the Ditto Building that would be a little bit different, because it wasn't the amount of acreage that had originally been suggested. But we do, and we still have, a possible prospect for the Ditto Building, so that was another site. However, there may be some other ways that we can do those projects, having given up on, on that project. You know, I still think that development along 165 in that area is very important to the west side of Bastrop, and that we still need to put some focus on that. So I'm not familiar with the piece of property that is being discussed on this, but I have used Mr., I have used Alderman and Associates for a number of soil tests out in the industrial park. So they're familiar with the area, and they're qualified to do the work.
Thank you, Ms. King. We are pursuing this area, and I know in some discussions we had had in conference call with Ms. King, she had mentioned some other sites in, in respect to your question, Mr. Armstrong. And of course, it's time-consuming when you get into these things and you have to do your analysis to make a determination. So this is the one where we're working on currently. And also, looking at what's being invested in that area with a one-point, a lagoon system, that $1,39,000, we're investing that out there. So I think we need to be prudent in making our decision in development of land. Love to have something on frontage road, but right now, this is where we are in making this assessment. Now, the previous site that was originally put in the grant on 165, that was gonna be annexed in, too many pipelines, so you really can't direct anything over pipelines like that. And so as we made that analysis, we were going farther and further back. So you have to, to make, conduct these studies to determine whether it's reasonably feasible to locate an area, because it just defeats your whole purpose if you purchase a piece of land and it's just there and you can't do anything with it. In fact, I mentioned to Secretary Moray that we're looking at improving certain areas. If we're already investing money in a certain area, then we need to look at what we can build on to make it better. And, and that's one of the reasons, in addition to, we knew we needed a red light on the other end, is to look at that intersection, which is already classified as one of Bastrop's most dangerous intersections. But we'll have to work with the police jury and the state and landowners, but that's another grant that could be funded through DOT. I think that took us off of the, what we were talking about, but I trust it gave you a little bit more information. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Did we, did you get the motion? Okay. I will entertain a motion on Resolution 111403. That was on.
That's just your introduction.
The Resolution 1403.
That's what we're on, right? And I asked Ms. King to come up and talk about, because you had asked if there were any other sites. So I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Nathan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Resolution 111405, a resolution of the mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Department of Cultural Recreation and Tourism, Division of Historic Preservation, for certified local government training and educational workshops. Ms. Goman?
Ma'am, this is a grant that the state provides with us. They do all the training. It deals with Main Street, promoting Main Street, a lot of grants, a lot of money that goes through there. What they do is they contract with the city of Bastrop, and what we, they send us the invoices. They sign off on us to pay it. We cut some. invoices, they sign off on us to pay it, we cut some checks. City of Bastrop in the end receives $3,000, and they cut some checks a year. So this is going to be... And we're just asking y'all to consider doing a payment.
I will entertain a motion on Resolution 111405.
I make a motion, Mayor?
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
A second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Ordinance 114203, an ordinance of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to expand Chapter 12 of the existing Code of Ordinances to create Article 4 groundwater protection and to enact Section 12, 301 through 12 dash 309 to create and establish a drinking water protection, critical area around each water well or water source service as an action, public water systems or source from contamination and provide otherwise with respect. We had a workshop last week with Jesse Mean and he is coming back to us next month. Mr. Lawrence, you want to talk about this ordinance?
Sure. It's based on a model ordinance that's been submitted to us. I think, Mr. Means, I think either his agency is Department of Environmental Quality or Department of Health and Hospitals or both, I just can't remember which one. But this is a recommendation from him and from his agency to protect groundwater sources. The numbers that the mayor read off, if this ordinance will, is adopted, will establish a new section in the Code of Ordinances from Section 12 dash 301 through 12 dash 309. That will be the codification of this new ordinance and it's where the public will be able to look it up and see it and read it if it is adopted. Tonight, it's only up for introduction. Can't take action on it until the regular meeting in October. There will be a publication period. If there are any comments, we'll be open to receiving those comments, particularly from the Board of Alderman as well. Between now and you taking final action on this.
Okay. This ordinance, as Mr. Lawrence has indicated, is for introduction only. I found the workshop to be very, very beneficial and I believe Mr. Means will be coming back doing other workshops, so I encourage the public to tune in to, to those sessions. Item number 14, Ordinance 1140, 4204, an ordinance of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, granting to Atmos Energy Corporation, a Texas and Virginia corporation with its principal office in the city of Dallas, Dallas County, Texas, and its successors and assigns the franchise and rights to conduct in such city the business of acquiring, maintaining, constructing, laying, repairing, removing, replacing, installing, operating and disposing of a gas system for the sale, transportation and distribution of natural gas within and beyond the municipal boundaries of the city and to residents and businesses located therein for light, heat, power and any other purposes and the right to use the present and future streets, roads, highways, alleys, bridges, public ways and immovable property in such city and owned or controlled by such city for such purposes prescribing the terms and conditions to which such franchise and rights are subject prescribing the term of such franchise and rights authorizing the mayor to execute all acts in the name of the city as are necessary and prudent and to provide otherwise with respect thereto. Mr. Lawrence, that was my full.
Yes, this is, in short order, this is a renewal or an extension of the franchise agreement to Atmos Gas or Atmos Energy for providing gas, natural gas service in the city. I'm trying to remember the exact date. My mind is just, I've been working over, mentally been working overtime. I'm trying to remember when this, when their existing franchise is going to run out. I mean, we are, we are there.
We're there. It ran out in, in April.
And so we're, so now to grant this right to Atmos Energy to be able to continue to operate and sell gas to customers in the city, state law says that, and the city charter says that the city grants a franchise right to utility companies to be able to do this. Why? Because they're going to use your right of ways, they're going to use your streets, they're going to use your bridges. You control that. This ordinance prescribes the terms for renewing and extending that agreement with Atmos. And just like the earlier ordinance, you can't take action on it tonight, it has to lay over until next month. So it's for introduction only.
Okay. And you do have a copy of that ordinance in your packets?
Mm-hmm.
So this ordinance does not require any action tonight? Ms. Goman, have you covered everything? Well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.